I'd like to call this March 2nd, Council Work Session New Order. Would everybody please stand? And let's remember Lou Parsicetti, who was a school board director, a coach for forty, fifty years. I know he's been down at Little League.
Fifty years.
And did a lot for the kids of this town, so let's remember him in our prayers. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, please.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Pezza. I understand it was a death in the family, Mr. Pezza. Ms. Cullen?
Here. Here.
President.
Mr. Crottochi.
President.
Mr. DeGisette.
Here.
Okay, we have a couple people I want to try to get in and out real quick. So Chucky, I know you want to get back on the street, so if you want to go to the podium.
Hi, Dan. Chuck Palmer, you guys all know me, live in town, work in town. I just up here real quick, because I got to get back to work. A couple of years ago, I did Fisher to cop, the PVA. We had a great event. We had a lot of help from town and from the council. We're looking to do it again in May. Looks like May 23rd. I was just up here to see if you guys would, again, offer to let us use the borough property over there by the lagoon and last time you guys offered to cover us under your insurance. So that's what I'm here asking, if you guys would do that again, it would be great. If you need copies of any of the paperwork again, if you forget what it's about, I can drop them off next meeting. I just didn't bring anything else.
Anybody's against it?
No, it was a wonderful program.
Excellent program.
You guys are all welcome to come, you know, come out and check it out if you just want to.
You know the date, Chucky, so we don't schedule anything?
It's May 23rd.
May 23rd.
What, schedule a wedding there first?
Ah, okay. Yeah, it's May 23rd.
Need to be an agenda item or no? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chucky? Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy here from the Bristol Borough, Little League. Go to the podium, please.
Hello, everyone. Stacy Dragon, New Brook Street. So I'm here today, we're in our final stages of registration, we have three days left. So Friday, March 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00, Saturday, the 7th, from 10:00 to 1:00, and Sunday, the 8th, I'm sorry, Saturday, the 7th, and Sunday, the 8th, from 12:00 to 3:00. Eligible right now, we have Little League International teamed up with T-Mobile. We don't ever turn a kid away. We will work out some way to get their fees paid. Our police department, the officers, one year donated money for kids who couldn't play. We always find a way, we never turn a kid away, never. But this grant is giving them their registration fee, if they qualify, free. So if it's the junior boys at 125, they're sending us a check for 125. If it's 110 for the middle grouping of children, they're sending us that. And if it's $60 for the additional or the T-ball, mini-ball players, they're sending us that. What is required is either a copy of their free lunch letter or their reduced lunch I believe if they have something proving that they get, is it SNAP, their food stamp card?
Yep.
I do not know what the eligibility is for financial, that was not given to me. We were just given the information on the program. So I don't know what the financial qualifications are that they would have to put in. It is littleleague.org/call-up-grant-program. Please click Apply and then Apply again, otherwise it just sends me a free, you know, friendly little email telling me that your kid wants to play Little League and then I have to email you back and say, hey, listen, go back and hit Apply and Apply. We've had, at this point, thirty-eight grants applied for, thirty-three have been approved, four are waiting for responses, they just did them on Sunday, and one got booted back because it didn't have the correct paperwork, like she didn't send the correct portion of some sort of paperwork. Out of that entire grouping, we were hoping this grant was going to bring us new players. We take kids from born in 2015 at four years old through age sixteen, league age sixteen. We were hoping this grant was going to bring out more Bristol kids, get us more players because it was free to play. We keep hearing that our fees are high and that's why kids aren't coming. Out of the thirty-three children that were approved, one.
One, isn't it?
So, parents, if you're out there and you're watching, please come out, sign up, file for this program, let your kid try the sport. They may not like it, they may love it, but if they don't come out and give it a shot, you won't know, and now you can do it for free through the program.
So basically, I talked to Stacy a couple of times on the phone regarding this program. And like she said, there's a lot of talk about kids can't afford it. Well, first of all, there were tickets that they could sell that would, the parents could sell to make up for the fee, which it wouldn't have cost them anything, anyway.
We give every parent that signs up, so when you pay your $110 fee, you get 55 $2 raffle tickets.
Okay.
We give them as a courtesy. If the parents sell those tickets at $2 apiece, that's their $110 back. They keep that cash, turn those raffle tickets into us, we pay the cash donation to the person when we pull the raffles at opening day. So everyone gets a chance to earn it back, but we have a lot of stay-at-home moms or parents that don't work and don't have the opportunity to sell those tickets. So we, like I said, we always find a way to make it work. We don't turn kids away, we find a way.
So Matt has texted me and telling me that you gave him the link, and he's posting that link on our TV right now.
That's good. Okay, great, thank you.
So people at home can see how to do this. So there's really no excuse right now for anybody to say they can't afford it or can't play Little League.
No. And again, we have three more days left, get them in. They were taking approximately four to eight hours to approve them. The ones from Sunday still have not come through, so I'm assuming as leagues are finding out, because we were one of the first ones in this area, but as leagues are finding out, I'm sure they're getting a little more inundated with applications. Two other things they need to know when they go in to apply, it'll ask them the start of the season, that is April 11th. We welcome all of you sitting in here today to come join us at opening day, it's 11:00 a.m. And the end of season is approximately June 20th, so they're going to ask those questions. They will not pay for equipment, shoes, spikes, things like that. We do have a donation area, if your child needs spikes or baseball pants, we do have some of those things in the press box, come see us.
When is opening day again?
April 11th, at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, anybody questions for Stacy?
The only question I have was just what Ralph said, just about, I think Morphe put it up there with the, so I was trying to write it down.
Yeah, I gave it to him when I came in, when I came in today.
All right. Stacy, thanks for all your dedication and hard work.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's everybody. Mayor, have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, number one, the, spent the day over at Snyder Girardi along with Mrs. Cullen. Today was Dr. Seuss's birthday, and if you don't know, it was his 116th birthday.
Wow.
And Read Across America, we got the opportunity to read to a couple different classes today, which was a lot of fun. Kids had a lot of questions about what does a mayor do, I told them a lot, but also, last month, I brought up that the AOC, the Academic and Oversight Committee, and Snyder Girardi, the school district, is sponsoring a career night that will be held at Snyder Girardi School on March 26th from 6:30 to 8:30. I believe they have over a hundred vendors, companies, that are going to be there at this point. It's an excellent opportunity for students to come there. Some of these groups may be offering jobs, not only to students, but adults. But the idea is it's a career night for kids, come out, bring your parents. Again, it's March 26th from 6:30 to 8:30. I don't want to take Herbie's thunder, but I know he's working very hard on his carbon monoxide alarm exchange program, I'll let him talk about that, but he's doing, we have a lot of CO alarms that come in, and a lot of the old ones are at their 10-year expiration date, so we need you to bring them in and we'll exchange them for you, but I'll let him talk about more on that. And, oh, I know everybody is probably thinking about the coronavirus. We hear we're getting all these feeds on TV and everybody's trying to create alarm. I think we need to have some concern. I just want to tell you that we've met fire chief, the police chief, EMA, council president, and a medical professional, went over what we currently have in place relative to these type of emergencies, and we're waiting for, please, March, Merle, it's going to be a meeting with, at the county that Merle will be attending, from a county's perspective, what they're going to be doing down the road. But I think that we basically have a good program in place, so that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just before we get, I should have mentioned this in the beginning, we had an executive session this evening to discuss the issue with the five temporary part-time employees. As of today, we've been waiting, going back and forth with the union rep, as of today, the union has put Joanne Driscoll and Mr. Palmer, said they are not part of the bargaining unit, which is great news because that means we saved two jobs. So therefore, Joanne and the animal control officer, Mr. Palmer, can continue their position and no concerns of layoff. The sad part is, again, this council met an executive session, and we are 100% united on this, that the other three employees, it's sad to say, will go home on March 27th. So we have advised the manager to draft up a letter to send out tomorrow, they'll probably receive that if they're not watching the meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, to let them know they are eligible to collect, and they will be, their last day here will be March 27th. Okay, let's go to public participation. Anybody on the side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
My name is Erica Cruz Devine, I'm on Mansion Street. Last May, while the West Ward polls to support Tony Ricchio, who by the way is a loss to this council, I was involved in an incident with a member of Station 51, who was there working for Mr. Gorman. This person used information she could have only obtained while at my father's home during an emergency call, violating HIPAA, this person spewed health information and falsities out in public. On June 10th, I filed a complaint with Chief Herb Slack, her station chief and the borough fire chief, and I carbon copied Mayor Saxton. Chief Slack expressed to me that he took my concerns very seriously, but did not schedule a meeting with me until three months after my initial complaint, citing summer vacation scheduling as the reason. During this time, I asked questions. Chief Slack was not able to confirm to me that this person, whose firefighter uniform adorned the badge of a registered nurse, was in fact a registered nurse. Also, the Bucks County detectives in Doylestown were not able to verify her credentials. Chief Slack was not able to tell me the last time she completed first aid or CPR, which I found disturbing. While I have a great amount of respect for first responders and the work they do, I do feel that the chief needs to have some accountability and to make sure that the people in his department are kept up to date and he is aware of their credentials before they are allowed to go through town and, in this case, mislead the people they are serving. After waiting three months, three months for a meeting, when I arrived, I was told I was not allowed to have my attorney nor my husband in the room. The panel was made up of Chief Slack and two of her colleagues, so in other words, this investigation was being done by her friends. There was no impartial party, no note taker, and I was given no advance warning that I was required to be alone. Although I was the complaining party, much of the insults that day, like the one you killed your father-in-law, were directed to my husband, and he was not even allowed in the room to make a statement. So my reason for being here today is that while we're talking, you guys have been talking about firehouse funding and changes and mergers, what I'm asking this mayor, Mayor Saxton and the council, is I'm asking you to consider maybe a new leadership and appoint a new fire chief, because someone needs to be accountable. And most importantly, I think the people in the borough need to know that when they call 911 for help, that their personal information and that of their loved ones is not going to be used against them or their family members as shameful gossip or political fodder. And lastly, I just want to say, shame on you to those council members who turned around and hired this vile human being. So that means Ralph, Betty, Lou, Greg, and Lorraine. And I wanted to mention that I received a tremendous outpouring of support from people, not just from the borough, but from surrounding townships, from police officers, EMS, strangers, people that reached out to me, they could not believe what happened here in this town. So this reflects poorly on our town, but now, looking back, it's been almost a year and nothing has been done. So think about how this reflects on all of you sitting here. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anybody else on the side of the room would like to speak? That ends public participation. Herbie, what do you got?
Just a few things. One is the fire companies are continuing to meet to discuss possible consolidation and mergers, and one of the things that they're working on right now is to reach out to other fire companies throughout the state, which have already gone through this process, to find out what the roadblocks were to moving ahead and making progress. The second thing is what the mayor started to mention is that the CO alarms, especially the ones at the fire department, we installed 2011, 2012, 2013, maybe they beeped, maybe they haven't beeped, but they're, they've reached the end of their life. We do have plenty of CO alarms right now. We started the program this past week on the exchange program, if, and we posted the times on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, that people can come to the fire station at Wooden Market Streets, bring your old CO alarm, we'll exchange it and give you a new one that's got a 10-year battery in it, so you don't have to worry about batteries at all. And so we've been working to get that up on the website for the borough and all, and I just, I posted another one on Facebook today to add some additional dates to continue this program, and we'll continue it up until we've given them all out.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Tony?
Yeah, Herb, I've always looked at you as a fair, as a fair guy, right? Like, seeing my wife up there and having to hear that again, it's so frustrating to me that that was allowed to happen under your watch. What is the process of, how could somebody be able to wear a patch that says that she is a registered nurse and then be in your, your fire station? Isn't that something that you should be aware of?
I'm going to, Tony.
Thank you.
You know we can't discuss this. Okay, so I'm not, I'm not going to-
All right, I'm just asking why, why can't you discuss?
You want to answer this question? Okay, he don't want to answer you.
Okay, well.
Michael, what do you have?
I have a question. The, the one, during the years that you were giving those out, you had the alarms, there were some alarm, alarms for the hearing impaired that you made us aware of, are they also available?
We still have, I believe we have three, three or four of those left. Great, right. Thank you very much.
Anything else for the fire chief? Thanks, Herbie. Chief? Excuse me. Things must be better to share, Michael.
When we had that meeting with the Bridge Commission, May what, remember the date? Weekend? I'll regret that for you. Merle and I went to a meeting with the Burlington Bristol Bridge Commission in New Jersey, State Police OEM, and a bunch of other municipalities Bristol, because that is going to be closed during several days, and I believe it's the month of May, hopefully Merle has the date. We don't believe it's going to have significant impact because the hours of operation should be mostly at night on weekends, so we're hoping for that.
May 1st.
May 1st, thank you. On the crime front, a couple people following the news, Chuck's Barbecue Burgery in Annabellas, subject was placed into custody, information that was developed in the borough helped with that. On the training front, our officers are going through an annual firearms qualification, CPR, first aid, and bloodborne pathogen training. We also, I don't know if the mayor touched on it in the executive session, it was a concern in the last meeting with the Gordenzia aspect of our responses and being a little bit overwhelming on our resources. We first reached out to Gordenzia, met with their team over there, they were very responsive, and they have been going through actually a change in supervisory staff. Followed by that, we met with the personnel of Lower Bucks Hospital and Gordenzia, had everybody in the same room, people from the emergency room, the people from prices, the mayor, myself, and the most important thing is that the communication was open and they see our concerns and they realize what a tax it is on resources, and we need to be taken out of that equation as much as possible. And they've been doing that for us, so we appreciate. We did learn that one of the biggest challenges we have with that is that they don't have the ability, what they do in that emergency room called dual diagnosis. Dual diagnosis basically means that you can be diagnosed as a substance abuse problem, but also at the same time a psychiatric emergency problem. Right now, they're split, and that's where we're having the ping-pong match going back and forth. So thanks to Councilman Crottochi also, I know he spearheaded a lot of the, poured some little gasoline on the fire over there to get us some attention, and we appreciate that. Also, myself and the school superintendent went to the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for a school safety symposium, just on best practices, and what else are we? And just again, on the substance abuse problem, so far this year, we are five Narcan saves by police officers, so we're still out there doing it, even though it's readily available to the public now, and I think that's why we see a decline. I think Herb would agree with me, but our officers are still frontline and they're doing a good job at that, and we appreciate their efforts. And other than that, 100 motor vehicle stops, close to 1,000 calls this month, that's it.
Any questions for the chief?
Just a point of reference, on the motor vehicle stops, can you just, what does that cover?
Motor vehicle stops covers everything from a stop sign violation, speeding violation, unregistered vehicle, see, the education enforcement, it doesn't actually mean that somebody actually got a ticket, it means it was an actual patrolman stopped the vehicle. School zones, we try to hit the school zones real hard.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first question, chief, is along the lines with the stop signs and the motor vehicle stops. From all the people in the borough, they all, you know, we all do, I don't mean you've heard it a million times about speeding and stop signs or whatever, and I know it's a difficult thing to do, is to monitor without being able to use radar and things like that, but with the idea, like you can't really put stop signs up everywhere, and not that they would, you know, adhere to the stop signs anyway all over town, but is there a way that we can patrol, like to create like a buzz around the area in the town, that if you're going, rolling past stop signs or, you know, speeding on, you know, on these side streets or even our main thoroughfares in town, is that we can kind of create a buzz so that, like, we can curtail some of this? Because I look at it in the sense of, there are places, like if I'm driving, like, my uncle used to live down in Delaware, so like there's a part of Delaware, everyone knows, like if you go down to Delaware, if you're going on this road, I forgot what the road was, and if you're not going 35 miles an hour, you're getting a ticket. And they just wait there, and that's what they do all day. And like, I know in the past, I remember like there would be officers in their cars waiting at different stop signs. I don't see a lot of that. I don't see a lot of that when I'm coming into town or, you know, at different parts of the day. Is that something that we could kind of implement, just so we could, you know, kind of create a buzz?
Well, the buzz would be nice, but the amount of stop signs and the certain intersections, and the problem is, and I understand your point, so if we, say we took the Bay Street Market stop sign, and we put an officer there 24/7, and you knew that you hit that stop sign, you're going to stop there. We have another, what, 200 stop signs in town? So our issue is economy or resources? We have two, maybe three officers on the road. I just went through the numbers that I gave you. So our amount of proactive traffic enforcement, based on our being handcuffed by the state of Pennsylvania without radar, is pretty much responsive. So what we do a lot of times, and you're, I know there was a lot of Facebook traffic, I was told about this, we get calls, I get calls all the time. I was up in Harriman a couple weeks ago, we were over on Second Avenue, that a couple weeks back, and Jefferson Avenue. What I try to do with our supplemental people is I do give them details in that area, but I don't hit one at a time, I have to go where the call is that week. You know, I do what I can with what I have, is basically what I do. So it's not, we don't have the luxury of creating many other burrows that have, maybe don't get a police call for a day or two. We're a very busy place. We do the best we can, but what I do ask, if anybody does have target situations, I know one of the areas we were actually on it tonight, was Otter Street, looking at those stop signs by the ball field. We've been there in the past, but some people brought to our concerns tonight, and so we're going to go back there again.
All right, yeah, appreciate it. The other question, now, as, as the chief, do you have a process in place that makes sure of, like if when we hire officers, is there a way, like, before we hire them and they're in our building and policing, that we're able to check their credentials before we put them out onto the street?
We're obligated to do background check.
Okay, that's just, thanks.
Tony, while you're on, just keep going, then go right into you.
Okay. I have one more, too. How are we handling these big tractor trailers that are going down these small streets in borough? I know I've witnessed, you know, like five myself.
We grab them when we can. We actually have, we're hiring an officer that actually has some specialty, specialty in the truck enforcement zone.
Yeah.
And we found, remember the last meeting we had, we hit him, or excuse me, we had him through the Pennsylvania Commission, working with us.
Yeah.
And like the word gets out, so we're hitting it in Bristol Borough today, so then they're not going to, they're going to go around to the township, or if they're hitting it in the township, they go through Bristol Borough, because they're on the radios and they get it out. So we're hoping that, you know, our plan is that this little bit more enforcement that we're doing, besides just getting them off the beaten path, which we usually do, because it's, a lot of times, it's just guys that are lost, with the enforcement action, the word will get out a little higher, like you said, create a buzz.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, now, is, when we have those incidents, and I, and I feel bad to say, because I know that people are trying to make a living, but, you know, they're, they're always trying to turn off the 13 and trying, it's always, you know, something a lot of the times in my war, in there, that those things are happening. And like, what is, is there a fine that goes along with us helping them get back on the road?
Well, if we want to issue them a summons, we can't in borough, we're in summons, and sometimes they do, and sometimes attitudes, everything.
Right, right.
You know, whatever. What we do is more than anything, is we assist them getting out of there, educate them. It's never, usually, it's never a multiple offender.
Right.
So it's a time gig from some guy from Illinois or Alabama.
No, I get it, okay, no, I get it. Thank you. Mr. Dillon, how did we make out with the baseball fields? I know I, do you ever get those pictures I sent you?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how we're making out with the cleanup? I haven't been over there.
I think Mr. Plensky was cleaning out his shed and all, that's, that's what the pictures were, and he did finish the cleaning out of the shed, and everything's been cleaned up.
Okay, and then, did you see those, those, I don't, I wouldn't say, they're puddled because of the water, but there's divots that behind that, what we used to call the men's softball field, but the visitor side closer to that, you know, the steward area.
Right.
Is there a way that we could build that up with some dirt or something, so it doesn't puddle up and make it, you know?
Just in that area, that area should be no problem.
Just, let me get into the, I was going to talk about it later. Just so you know, the last couple years, we had RNS go out there, and they tried to grade the fields the best they can in the beginning of the year, because before RNS, there was a landscaping company, and I don't want to give their name, they were putting like seven, eight truckloads of dirt down throughout the complex, which we didn't think was needed. So Steve went out, and for the last couple years, he regraded these fields at no charge for the borough. So I met his guy out there again today for the simple reason that we have a lot of issues, and, you know, they're not going to keep doing it for nothing, but he did say to me, instead of them, because they're so busy and they don't have the time, he doesn't need the work, he recommended- the work, he recommended a company that specifically deals with fields. They did the fields in Newtown, and they do maintenance, and they, you know, do grading and sod, all that kinda stuff. So, if it doesn't rain tomorrow, I'm gonna meet them out there, if it does rain tomorrow, I'm gonna try to meet them out there on Wednesday.
Okay.
So, it's a matter of where you wanna take these fields, but they do need, look, they're old, there's no question, and something needs, like the Little Lake field has about an eight to 10 inch lip, so that ball, if it gets through the infield, it's gonna come flying up in the air. So, if you cut it out now, try to sod it, is the sod really gonna take? But we're using them now into November with kickball and everything else that's going on.
And here's the thing about it, like, this is not to complain and say, oh, this is that, or, this is not to complain, but I believe that RNS, when they are out there, and when they did go out there, we did pay them for that.
No, we didn't.
No, I remember seeing it, I'll look it up, I'm not 100% sure.
Look it up, because I know he did it for nothing.
But I'll check, but here's the other thing too, is what are we hiring Mr. Plensky for if we have to go outside, I mean, as of now, he doesn't have to cut the grass, our borough workers do it. The only thing he's responsible for really is the dirt and the cleanup around the place, which is hardly ever done, and if it's done, it's done by borough workers. So, I just don't understand, what are we paying Mr. Plensky for?
Well, I disagree with you. First of all, he's there every day emptying trash cans.
He's not, but go ahead, that's in my ward, I looked.
He cleans the bathrooms and he drags the fields and lines the fields. The high school has their people do the lining of the fields for their games, which Leo used to do before.
Right.
The problem is, Leo's job does not bring him into October, November, December, January, February. He's been doing that for us, and I told him he's out of his mind, I would not do it. The borough should be taking care of the fields at the end of baseball season. That's not his job, and that's not what he's being paid for, but he's been doing it out of goodness of his heart. That's why I feel that when people feel the way you feel, he should not do it. I can't make him understand that.
No, it's not, here's the thing about it, Ralph, and I don't mean to get in an argument.
I don't know what you want him to do.
What do you mean? What I want, I don't want him to do anything. I think that's something, if that's what we're paying other people to do, there's no reason to pay somebody to rake the field and line it, because any other community in the area that I'm aware of, they have their coaches, dads, or volunteers do it, and it's been that way forever. And now what you're saying is that he only has to do it during baseball season, I had that argument before, where he's only there six months, he's really getting paid $2,000 a month before he's there, and you go, no, he's there for 10 months, this is how much he's making, no, he's not.
He does the sod, who does the soccer field?
Okay, I'm just, Ralph, I'm there every day, that's my ward, he's not there every day doing anything. If he was, there wouldn't be puddles, there wouldn't be trash strewn all over the place where, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not there to ban them, I'm just saying, let's talk about what's real and what isn't. That's not what you're saying.
Which is, you want this guy to become a surveyor now and start dealing with grading of fields. That's not his job, his job is maintenance. His job is to go there, drag the fields, line the fields for Little Lake, and pick up the trash in the bathrooms. If that's, if you're saying that we should put this back on Little Lake, maybe that's something we should vote on and do.
Okay, well, let's even go a step further.
If the fields aren't done right, then, you know, I mean, we're doing things for the school that we never did before, should we give that up too, that Leo's doing?
All right, so, let's go back to...
Asking you a question.
Oh, no, I don't believe that he's, I don't believe that what he's doing is worth $12,000 a year, is what I'm saying.
That's your opinion, but we're upset, so let's take your...
Wait, wait, let me finish, I'll let you finish. So, if that's the case, where it's $12,000 a year, and you don't think that he's a surveyor, he's, the only thing he needs to be doing is lining the fields and raking the dirt, right? I'm sure that if we put that out to bid, I'm sure there's somebody in Bristol who would be excited to do that job for $5,000 or $6,000 a year and save us $6,000 a year that we could kick back into our recreation for the kids in the borough.
Okay, that's your opinion.
No, it is, it's something that makes common sense opinion, it's not my opinion, it's common sense.
Well, why don't you get somebody to come here this week and let us know who's interested in doing it.
Okay, so what? So, you could say, well, it doesn't matter, because I, I'm giving, Leo already got the job, is that, no, I'm not gonna waste somebody's time if you're not gonna be serious.
We have a contract with Leo for four years.
Exactly, so then we'll wait till after contract and then you...
And if I'm here, he'll get another four years.
That's what I'm saying, so don't waste people's time and act like you're going to do something that you're not.
That's what you're doing right now.
No, I'm not, all right, so we're moving on. So, number four, all right, Elm and Chestnut Street, I would love to see, we're gonna spend $3 million of taxpayers' money when we're set and done, over on Chestnut and Elm Street. That property is going to be demolished, and I believe that that area would be the perfect opportunity, when you combine that area, Chestnut, Elm, and which now, the old tennis courts in that area that lead up to the canal, would be a perfect place to have a central park for this town. Right now, the only thing that we have that everyone's focused on is Mill Street, and I get it, we want to have a nice business district and work on it, but there's nothing to bring anybody else to other parts of town. That is dead smack in the middle, it's a perfect opportunity, and what you talked about, which I had to read, because for some reason, I don't know why, the other members of council were invited when Ben Carson was brought into the borough to talk about this, again, I find that very, very disheartening, that you run for office, you're out there campaigning, you're working for the people, you're doing, and you don't get invited when somebody of, you know, that magnitude comes in the borough to talk about redeveloping the borough, and the only thing that is going to stop us is our, what we can create, our minds are the only things that are gonna stop us, right? So, like to me, if that's the case, that should be a beautiful central park with fields for kids to work, basketball courts, and it would just, I just picture that being such a great spot for the town. But here's the thing about it, what I'm so frustrated about is, we're not gonna know anything that goes over there, because the information stays with only a couple people. So, if you could kinda let us know, what are your plans, Mr. Dejezep, before Elm Street and Chestnut Street?
Well, first of all, the Ben Carson thing was invitation only, and it wasn't for council.
Oh.
So, there was, I don't think anybody was there besides, maybe Louie was there for council? No, you weren't even there, Louie.
Louie was there. So, what was the invitation?
It was through Congressman Fitzpatrick's office that sent out an invitation.
An invitation that your son and your brother-in-law would be invited, but not members of council?
It was for business people.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Michael Gorman was there, Louie's a business person, Dave's a business person. All I'm saying, this is what I'm talking about, that you're not even included in the process of what's going on in your own town that you're an elected official for.
Yeah, I feel bad.
No, you don't have to feel bad, it's just, just who you are, that's all. You know what I mean? And then you make excuses.
What was your other question besides Ben Carson?
So, what are your plans, Ralph, of that area?
I would love to see exactly what you set a park there.
Okay.
I think that would be outstanding, and if you can get us the money, I'd vote for it tonight. I think that would be great.
Well, we need Ben Carson, because Ben Carson...
It's Ben Carson's for HUD, it has nothing to do with parks.
Well, the meeting, I read in the paper, whatever it said, is your imagination is the only thing that would, so that wasn't true.
Ben Carson has nothing to do with parks.
All right, well, here's the thing about it, if you could pledge that you will give, and I have no problem, I mean, Gilmore was a very important part of the park that went over in Bristol Township, so I'm sure they're aware of things, and if you would, if you would tell me now that you're going to pledge your participation and your agreement to having a park there, I'm willing to, you know, to go out and do whatever we have to, but I'm sure there are grants available. Did Bristol Township get any grants over there, or, you know?
Yeah, yeah, small one.
Okay, so, I mean, if it's there, and if we really wanna do it, Ralph, I understand that you're in charge, and I don't have a problem with it.
I'm telling you, I'm supporting you.
That's what I'm saying, but...
I think Bristol Township spent 11 million.
11 million?
How much was it?
I don't know. For which park?
Thing.
Which, well, there's two parks, the one on Cedar or the one that just...
No, the new one, that's by the municipal building.
This is 6 million, the building came from a good space.
All right, so... 5 million is...
Brought it by.
Okay, so...
Borrowed 5 million.
Right.
So, if you wanna do it, just let us know.
I do, I do wanna do it.
Okay.
But we also put money into debt service to pay for it.
All right, so you raised...
Because we have a service.
So, you come back with a plan, Tony, and you got my support.
All right, I appreciate it.
Let us know how much you wanna borrow, how much the payment's how we're gonna pay for the loan, we could, we raise taxes through debt service.
All right, so we'll...
Whatever you wanna do.
Okay, so, the first thing, I guess, is do I have the ability to reach out to Kurt and come up with some type of conceptual plan of the area? It's gonna be fun working with you, Kurt.
Whatever, whatever costs Kurt, just do it. You wanna price from them first, or you wanna just give them the okay?
Well, I'll talk to them first, and then, you know, I'm sure he's not gonna charge me to talk to them.
No.
I don't know. He might. You're lucky, don't you?
And, all right, and then I'll wait until you talk to the new business. These are gonna be things that we describe before we go into our agenda meeting to vote on?
Yes.
That's all I have, thanks.
Dave?
Yeah, real quick, is Mill Run Express any interest in that?
We talked to him several times, we think that would be also a great project, is there's no impact on the school district. They talked about assistant living and then transitioning them into the nursing home. So, but again, I, it could be recreation, I definitely will vote to go borrow 6 million if Mr. Devine wants to do that, and...
That would be tax revenue also, not raise taxes.
To pay for it.
No, no, I'm talking tax revenue for Mill Run.
Yeah, tax revenue for Mill Run. Tony, anything else?
Actually, I'm glad you came back to me, this is for Mr. Dillon. The one, the signage that we have for those trucks, those large trucks that are going down, you know, those smaller streets, there was an incident that happened on Spring Street on the area by the baseball field recently, that just happened with the wires that I reached out to you about. Is there a way that we can make that sign that's on the front of that street, it's slanted sideways, so it's not facing forward? So, you really, if you're coming from 13 past, you're not gonna see the sign?
Mr. Winslow gave me a detailed email with pictures today.
Okay.
I forwarded it to Mr. Waldron, so hopefully it'll be done sometime this week.
Okay, and I wanna thank you too for the other things that you got done, and, you know, you had the one thing at the, I don't know if you're responsible, but I'm gonna give you credit for it, at the canal, it was, you know, the one page that was there in the middle was redone, so it looks nice again. That's it.
Dave, what do you got? Let's go back to you.
Mr. Dillon, I just got a follow-up at the end of Fourth Avenue and Green Street, you can take care of that for me, I appreciate it. And also, I've got some questions on the earned income tax with our financial obligations that will be coming up, but it's okay with you, I'll come over and see you personally on that, we could talk about, that's okay with you. That's all I got.
Louie?
There's just a couple of things going on in March that I wanted our public to be aware of. One is, there's a trade show called the Idea Show out in Valley Forge on March 11th from 8:30 until 4:30, and this, there's a lot of people in town that are involved in construction or project management, property management, so this is free, a free trade show if you're pre-registered online. The high school has on March 13th, 14th, and 15th, Little Shop of Horrors, I'm being a little selfish here, but my grandsons are in it, also Mr. Devine Stewart is in it, so...
We got together yesterday.
I'm gonna put a plug in for that.
Officer Pete Faith Stewart is lead in the play.
Yes, and Mayor Saxon already mentioned the Career Night on March 26th, and then Raising the Bar is having the spirits and brews of Bristol Borough, this is a, at Center for the Arts on April 1st, it's 6:00 PM, and then the panel discussion, it's going to be Dad's Hat, Odd Logic, and there's two other fellows moving behind Manion's Building, and...
Mike Hopson Hardware.
And Ho, yes, Hopson Hardware, and...
Probably Naked Brewery with...
Yes, Naked Brewery, so, this is, this is gonna be April 1st, you can go online on Raising the Bar's site, and it's gonna be at Center for the Arts, and these have all been good, you know, they're good projects going on in town, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Michael?
Yes, why, Mr. Crottochi was on that, also in March is the pub crawl that benefits Lou Hopson. It's a good cause, but it's also a way, I had, it's one of my favorite days to get to meet lots of people in town from all over that you may not have seen on a daily basis. And then, once again, that the Bucks County sign that is there, now that the nice weather's coming, a lot of people are asking, you know, is it okay to take photos with the class, the children in classes and groups? Absolutely, it's encouraged. Just being part of the board now on Visit Bucks, they are ecstatic, once again, of how Bristol, the community, has gotten all the publicity on it, and it's just a fun thing to do, so now that the weather's coming out, go out, do that, and post the picture, it's fun, and I'm gonna suggest that all of council, when we have the time to go there and have that done as well. That's it.
Maggie?
Mr. Dillon, I brought up a couple of months ago, I was walking with my grandson the other day, the puddle by the courthouse, it's a large puddle of water every time it rains, and it takes days for it to saturate into the ground, and I really don't know how we can take care of that, but I know it, the other day he was there for at least three days, and my concern is that the kids cross from Otter towards the courthouse, and then they have to cross that spot right there to go to school, and the puddle's not a little puddle, it's a big puddle, I have pictures of it. So, I don't know if George can go down there and check it out next time.
All right, we'll take another look at it.
Okay, I'll send you the pictures that I have. Another thing is that a couple of months ago, we had someone, I believe he lives on Bay Street, but it regards the Howe Street parking, and I would like to visit that site this week, tomorrow if possible, but if not, this week, to see if we can change that yellow line, that large yellow line that we put there, taking away parking spots, I think we can minimize that, I would like to see it minimized, at least half of it, because no matter what, I mean, I know we're worried about the trucks turning in there, as we are worried about trucks all over town, but they're gonna go over the sidewalk no matter what, and I just, I need to gain some of those parking spots back, so that I would like you to look into, and Ralph and me and you and George can meet up, I would appreciate it. And last, when we have new construction, and I'm asking because people are asking me, and I want them to hear it from you guys, when we have new construction in Bristol, who does the inspections?
For building...
Yeah, like when you buy, when you build four new houses.
BIU.
BIU, okay, so, it's not the borough. So, the problem I'm having is, and I'll be, I'll send you where it's at and which ones they are, and I'm not gonna, you know, say it on TV, but there's an area where houses were built and they passed inspections, but yet they're having a lot of problems in those homes. When they call the builder, the builder blames the inspections company, when they call, one of them has to do with a heater, when they blame the heater company, heater company guy says, well, that's why you get inspections, they should've found this. Just a lot of little problems, and I just would like to send you the information and the addresses, and see if we can send BIU a letter telling them, like, I'm not trying to tell anybody how to do their job, but maybe because they think it's new construction, it's quick to send it through, and I, it's more than one problem, like carbon monoxide, that's a problem, electrical, that's a problem, heater, that's a problem, these are problems. So, if you're buying a new house in the borough, we don't want people to act like we're passing it through and we're letting it go. So, I wanna get to the bottom of that, and I'll send you the addresses and the information, and that's all I have.
All right.
First thing I'd like to do is put a motion on the floor...
Um, first thing I'd like to do is put a motion on the floor, uh, for our next meeting, which is going to take place this evening, is that correct?
So you want to make number eight?
Yeah, we want to add number eight. To adopt six resolutions to apply for six grant applications to the Community Development Authority. Okay? I wanted to say something about tonight Dr. Seuss Day. There is also a mural that's been painted by Marc Dubois in the, um, in the school, inside of Drati School. He's the artist that painted the mural, um, on Old Route Thirteen. It was done with the gifted children at, from, um, Mrs. Curie, Dory Curie's class. And it was, there were many books, there were pictures of things from many different books that the children read. Um, and if you get a chance to see this, it's pretty awesome. And the kids were able to paint the fish, that's what they allowed them to do at the end. They were, he, he drew everything, he did a magnificent job, this is really something to see. And the, the kids were involved the entire time, from the concept of it to the finish of it, and I, I think it's a pretty awesome thing. And he, he's such a, a great man, we should really thank him for everything he's been doing for this town. Also, I wanted to ask, a constituent called me, and this is going to, I need Merle to help me out with this. Merle, remember when you went for that I.D. for the, you, there's a new I.D. that everybody's supposed to get? Could you go up there and just say what you need to bring and where you have to go to get this I.D.?
Why? And why? And why, I'm sorry.
Yeah, why? Whatever it's called, whatever you did, whatever, if you don't mind, because people want to understand what's going on with this.
Real ID.
Yes, the real I.D.
The real I.D.
Uh, it was a federal requirement, I believe, it comes down through the states. You go there, uh, you take all of your documentation, and it took me a while to go through, because I was born in Trenton, so I had to go to Trenton to get the actual birth certificate. What they gave my mother at birth was, was a certificate saying that the actual birth certificate was on file in Trenton, so. I show up out here at Trivos.
Is that where you go, Trivos, for?
Well, it's by the, uh, Nishami Mall.
Okay.
And that's the closest one.
Okay.
And you go in, and then you get a, you, there's a, um, a greeter there, and they have these different, uh, four buttons on this machine. So if you're there for the real I.D., you, they'll tell you to push the bottom button, and then it gives you a number. And all the numbers are displayed above the people that are doing the processing. So when your number's called, you go up. So my number got called, I went up, and I gave him, and, and the first words out of her mouth is, oh, well, you don't have the right thing here. So I just got done sitting an hour to go get that done, I had to go back on the way home.
So it's birth certificate, what else?
Social Security number.
Your number?
No, no, your card.
My card, okay.
Yeah, and, and I had to also get that, because when they issued my Social Security number, or card, they gave it to me with only my middle name and my last name. So I had to go get that done. So on the way back from Trenton, I stopped at Fairless Hills and got that going. And you can use your existing driver's license, which is photo I.D., there's one form of I.D. when you give it to them, and then they ask for a second.
What about passport, can you use that as well?
You can use that.
Well, if it's current.
Okay, and while I figured that, but, um, and what's, what's the cost of it, and why do we have to get this?
It has to do, I think, with the immigration and the things that they're making sure that you're.
When is the final day, though, that we have to have it by?
October.
October two twenty, twenty twenty?
I believe that's.
Okay.
If I may, it's, it's for, it's for air travel.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's real ideas for air travel, it's all for TSA. If you have a valid passport, you do not need it, you just need to use your valid passport. State of Pennsylvania does not conform with the standards, them and thirteen other states don't conform with the standards of having so many icons inside the I.D., so everybody has to do this, if you're going to use your driver's license to get on an airplane.
Okay.
But it has to be, it's like Merle said, it's going to be quite uner taken by.
And how much did it cost?
It's also to get into central buildings first, in addition to the.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was like sixty-some dollars by the time I was done with the real I.D.
Okay.
And it's a one-time charge, and then the only difference is your driver's license is the same, except they put a star on there in a, in a circle, that's how they determine it's a real I.D.
Okay, thank you so much.
There's a federal push to extend another year right now.
Yeah.
I hope so, because there's a lot of people that don't have.
Oh, yeah.
I'm one of them, I mean, I have, I have a.
Three hours in line. And the birth certificate, you have to make sure it has the.
Raise seal.
Raise seal. Okay.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to say, if you get a chance to ride by Mill Run, it looks incredible, and, um, they're doing all of the, uh, pavements near there for handicapped accessible, um, it's really coming along, and that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Dillon, you have anything?
No, just works on the, uh, proposed agenda.
Mr. Solano?
No.
Okay, before we go into number, item three to eight, Susan Rain added something. I just want to introduce a good friend of ours, Craig Bowen, who's the president of Bristol Township Council, and thanks for stopping in tonight. Okay, number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to accept a council meeting minutes for February tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second by.
Wait, I gotta, I, I thought we were, this was our work session. Aren't we going to talk about these things before we vote on them?
Well, if there's a question, question, you can talk on it.
Well, there's some things on here that, you know, I thought that we.
Why don't you go through the agenda and tell us what you want to talk about?
I thought that's what you were going to do.
Go ahead with the.
Well, that's why we're voting, and then there's a question on the motion.
Right, but I'm saying, we, we usually.
Go ahead, I'm giving it, do what you want, whatever you want to do. But the motion's off the floor for now. So, what item do you want to talk about?
I want to talk about all of them.
Go ahead.
Going through them. All right, so, Dr. Orness's install stop sign on West Railroad Avenue.
What number is that?
That's number four. So, that's going to, that's going to be the place where they just repave over there on, uh, next to Otter, right?
Yep.
So we had two stop signs there, adopt ordinance restricting parking at two oh six.
Well, let's go back to four.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any more questions on that?
No, I'll wait for when we do the agenda meeting, this is the problem when you do both meetings at once. So I, I thought we go over this first, talk about if there's any.
Well, I said tonight that we can meet again in two weeks if you want.
I'll do that, yeah, that's fine.
All right, so we need to deal with some of this tonight.
Okay, so we're meeting again in two weeks.
I didn't say we're meeting, I said if we need to meet in two weeks. You have all the time you need right now to discuss any item on this agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this is what we usually do, this is why it's a work session.
So number four you just mentioned.
Okay.
Now you're on five.
Thank you. All right, adopt ordinance restricting parking at two oh six Otter Street to thirty minutes, Monday through Friday. Now, like, I don't know if anybody else is concerned with this ordinance, but I think that it's opening up, opening up a can of worms, because it's just somebody who decides they have a business, they want to have two parking spots, so their customers during working hours can come into, you know, into the shop, cater bill, or whatever it is. The problem that I have with it doesn't make any sense, because if you're not going to allow other businesses to have free reign, then you, it's, you're, you're, you're basically selecting or choosing who's going to be able to do it, and then we vote on it, and then you're basing it on who you're connected with, who you're friends with, who you want to, who do you want to give the right to do that? I'm not for that, right? If it's going to be allowed for one business, it has to be allowed for everybody. Otherwise, I don't believe you should do it.
But we said we would go case to case.
Yeah, but you can't go case to case, because it's not fair to everybody, Betty. Do you believe it's fair for everybody?
All right, listen, Betty's got the floor.
All right, so, and, and like, one of the things with Mr. Gorman, this is your first vote, and I remember at the last meeting, because I listened to the last meeting, is that you said that you went over there and, you know, you did like a drive-by just to check it out, and you saw, you know, there was like six or eight open spots, it wasn't no big deal, but here's the thing, I look at it the other way. If it's no big deal that there's other spots there, then it should be no big deal for Harris, which is a company, to, to get spots there. So to, to give those guys two spots, when they already have ample parking in the back, and they have parking on the side of their building that, you know, that they use, like, to me, it's not my word, but it's not, but what it does is it opens it up to everybody in the borough, so how is it going to be that, as a council, we say, yes, it's okay, we're going to take it case by case? I'm going to let Harris do it, but then I have businesses on Beaver Street that they're not going to have the same opportunity, if they come in front of here, and you guys could say what you want to say, it's going to be case by case, it's not going to be case by case, because they're not going to get approved.
Why not?
Why not?
Come on, can we stop playing games? Because they don't, okay, they don't, because they don't, because they don't participate in the raise the bar stuff, they don't part, they don't give to the committee to secu, why you guys answer the truth?
All right, Tony.
Michael Gorman, that's not the truth.
Michael, you don't need to answer that.
No, he's a, he's a councilman.
Not going back and forth.
Oh, you.
You address your questions to me.
Well, then, that's everybody, then, so when they start commenting, shut them down.
I will.
You haven't yet.
I just called Betty, then I.
She did.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, that's, that's the problem that I have, it's not going to be fair to everybody. Because now, in a nutshell, again, these are parking issues, or these things, Lou, you're, you're in charge, you're the chairperson of the parking committee. When this comes in front of you, does this make sense to you? Who's part of your parking committee that you guys are discussing this?
This is not their space. This isn't restricted to Harris fields. This is no different than the spaces that we, actually, we have some that it's bank parking only. And that's been up.
All right, guys, I'm not, I'm not going to keep going back and forth.
Isn't this what the work session's for?
Make your statement, and we'll move on.
It's, this is the work session.
Okay, and we're giving you time to discuss it.
We're talking, we're, we're colleagues.
You don't talk across the floor.
Why can't we?
Because I'm running the meeting, and I'm telling you, address your concerns to me.
Well, there is, the concern's not, all right, can you ask Mr., does that make any sense? Can you ask Mr. Quatrochi, who's part of the parking committee, Mr. De Giuseppe?
No need for it.
Well, then how am I going to have this conversation?
You made a statement about Beaver Street. If there's somebody on Beaver Street that wants a parking spot.
You're missing the point. No, you're missing the point, the point is, you're opening up a can of worms.
Hey, I take that in the consideration.
Right, you're not taking it in consideration, because.
When I vote, I'll take that in consideration.
All right, well, anyway, this is, this is the problem, it, if you're having a work session, aren't you supposed to be able to talk to your colleagues about it? No, we're not.
Mr. Quatrochi, you want to answer him? But I'm not getting into a dialogue for half hour.
This, like I said, I'll mention it again, it's not for Harris', it's not restricted for Harris', this is not the first time we've done it for businesses in town, and we've done, we've done something in your word, which I'm sure, you're worried that Mr. De Giuseppe's friends with Harris', so that's why you don't like this.
No, that's not it.
But, 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 that's it, that's it.
No, it's not.
Okay, it's not, but it, on Garden Street, we created a, a, a special parking zone there for the people on Garden Street, in your word.
You have to help the people.
Oh, well, how about if I'm a person from Bristol that drives to the, to the train station? Why can't I park on Garden Street? I can't park on Garden Street.
Okay.
I should park.
Here's, here's the difference, Lou, what we did on Garden Street is to help the residents. This is not to help the residents, this is to hurt the residents and help a business.
This is to help a guy who's.
Who wrote it? Who, who, who is?
All right, guys, I'm not getting into this, that's the end of the.
Because it doesn't make sense, it's wrong.
All right, what else you got, Tony?
Ridiculous. All right, so let's add to it. So now, since it's not a zoning issue, it's not a parking, so basically, if anybody comes to us, why can't an older lady or an older gentleman who struggles to get in their house, why can't we do it for them? They get done work at three, why can't we have no parking there for that older person, that elderly person from three to six, so they could park in front of our house? What's going to stop us from saying no to them?
Not on the agenda.
Look, what I'm saying, what's going to stop, as a whole, I'm talking for real.
They get handicapped parking.
All right.
The handicap park has nothing, they're elderly, there's, that's not a handicap.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
And make that throughout the entire, Lorraine.
No. What I'm, what I'm saying is, you're opening up a can of worms.
Okay, we're taking.
So you, so you can do something nice for, listen, and I'm, I understand what it is, and I'm not saying it in a negative way, it's part of politics, part of what it is, but this is somebody that, that you're friends with, that has done some good things in a borough, I'm not saying any of those things are not true, all I'm saying is it's going to cause a problem down the road.
Okay.
When other people, and if not, I'm going to tell everybody, please come to the meeting and ask for a parking spot.
I agree.
Ask for a parking spot.
I agree. And the last meeting, you weren't here, we said if anybody on that street wanted to come here, to voice our opinion, please come to this meeting, do you see anybody?
Ralph, yeah, I don't mean to, and I know you, you're going to get on, do you think anybody, you've been here a long time, do you think anybody is going to go to that podium and say anything that's going to be negative for fear of what, what happened if they come and complain about something?
Yeah, okay.
It's the reality, you could say it isn't, but that's the reality. All right, so, I mean, I just wanted to make that clear, I'm, I'm not okay with that, and now we have another parking issue on number, uh, we'll go to number six, if we're in there. All right, Bristol Borough curb ramp program. All right, so I talked to, to a couple of the local, you know, concrete guys, and, you know, you get a mix, it sounds like a fair price, they, you know, so I'm okay with that, it's not a problem. Is there a way, Mr. Dillon, that we can alert these local contractors when we do these types of things? Is there a way that we could, you know, make sure that all these guys are?
You have a list of people that you want notified, give it to Mr. Dillon, and he'll make sure, and next time the bids go out there, notify.
Okay. All right, and then authorize advertising ordinance to allow parking on both sides of Pond Street. All right, so, to me, both sides of Pond Street, then, that's something that makes sense, it's not, you know, it, it's not a residential area, it's there. So, I mean, to me, that's something that makes sense, but again, I don't know why, there, there's no in-between party, like, this doesn't go to the parking committee with Mr. Quatrochi, it just goes right in front of us before it goes there?
Yep.
All right. And then, there's a, a motion I would like to add to the agenda, is that I would like to make a motion introducing term limits to make sure that we don't have the same people representing us for so long. And specifically, what I would like to look like would be something, the term limits would be for three consecutive terms and a total of four years for any one person to hold the chair or vice chair position. So that way, you know, people could be honored, but it would, it would spread, and there wouldn't be so much, you know, it, it wouldn't just be one person that's making all of, you know, the decisions of what's going on in the town. I think that, I would like to add that to the agenda.
Oh, it's just for the chair and vice chair, or for, just for twelve years?
No, no, three consecutive terms for everybody.
So you can't run anymore after twelve years?
No, no, you can, it's just not consecutive, so you would have to step out.
And then come back.
And then come back.
All right.
Is it that crazy, Mayor, is that that crazy to ask, you've been here ninety years?
I'll let it talk.
Have you, you know, do you, do you think we need fresh, the people in here? Fresh ideas?
I think the state would have something to say about it.
All right, yes.
Oh, they would? Term limits?
What else, Tony?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay, you all done?
Yeah, I just went over, I did your job, I did one over the agenda.
Number four on the agenda.
Mr. President, we, three, we have to do three.
I'm sorry.
I make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes from February tenth to tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make, make a motion to adopt an ordinance to install a stop sign on West Railroad Avenue at Old Route Thirteen, and a stop sign on West Railroad Avenue on Otter Street.
I have a second, second by Mr., Mrs. Cullen. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance restricting parking at two oh six Otter Street to thirty minutes, Monday through Friday, between the hours of eight A.M. and five P.M.
Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes, comments is just, I, I, I don't think this is a good idea, and we are opening ourselves up for a bunch of headaches. People are going to be asking for parking spots, is my opinion.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I just want everybody to realize that it's a thirty minutes from, between the hours of eight and five. Eight and five.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Me.
You got that, Mar?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for the two thousand and nineteen Bristol Borough CDBG Curb Ramp Program to GMB Construction Incorporated for the base bid alternate number one and alternate number two, in the amount of ninety-two thousand and forty dollars, contingent upon a thirty-day review period for GMB Construction Incorporated pursuant to the requirements of the responsible contractor's ordinance.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertising ordinance to allow parking on both sides of Pond Street, between Mill Street and the municipal parking lot.
Two hours.
To be for, also noted to be a two-hour parking limit.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt six resolutions to apply for six grant applications to the Community Development Authority, which follows. Number one, ADA curb ramp upgrades two hundred and four thousand, four hundred dollars. Twenty-eight curb ramps along Walnut, Mulberry, and Wood Street. Uh, spur, number two, spur line path resurfacing ninety thousand. Paving of the spur line path from Darns to Monroe. If there were other locations that the borough was concerned about, we can modify this application. Sidewalk improvements, one hundred thousand dollars. Construction of sidewalk to close gaps on Green Street, Beaver Street, Fregate Avenue, and Pine Grove Street. Mulberry Street resurfacing ninety-five thousand dollars. Paving of Mulberry Street. This road was not paved in two thousand and nine, but we can select a different road if we would like. Mill and Radcliffe pedestrian improvements, two hundred and sixty-five thousand sidewalk bumpouts, and pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Mill and Radcliffe Streets. Uh, Elm Street redevelopment phase, two hundred and fifty thousand demolition of eleven borough-owned properties on Elm as a part of Chestnut Elm redevelopment. Elm Street redevelopment.
So, I got a second by Mr. Quatrochi. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I just have one question. We talked about in there, uh, Mrs. Cullen said that we would be able to modify if it was, you know, a, a different street, or, or a different area that could get hit. So, basically, I'm re, I'm, what I'm hearing is that we need to put in for, we need to put in for this now, but after, if it gets approved, we could change it to a more, a situation that could be more needy?
I'm almost sure we can move the money to pave another street.
Okay.
No?
Ken? All right, so I should take that out of there?
Um, if you want, the applications are due on March eighteenth, so if you have for discussion now at this point, if you want it to be changed, but once you have-
Okay, so-
The street is in there right now.
It's Mulberry Street. The road was not paved in two thousand and nine.
All right, do you have, anybody have something they wanna try to change it to?
Well, I, I know the alley that we have behind Bunkie that runs from Corson to Pass Pine is terrible.
That's Plum Street.
Plum Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think we're gonna do an alley, if we could do a street, so.
If a street, well, it's Plum Street.
Plum Street?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, again, this is all the grants that I'm trying to get against the borough, so, that's what we came up with. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we decide that, that we're not gonna change any of them to Plum Street?
No.
Uh, well, then, I wanna agree-
I'm gonna take this out. Put, but we can select two different, different-
Select a different street.
I'm saying, we're eliminating that section of it.
Of the motion.
Of the motion, we're eliminating, but we can select a different road.
So, we're voting on this motion. There's a motion and a second.
Right, but here's the problem. Now, we have to do each one individually, because I'm, I wanna vote for five of them, but not all of them.
Plum Street's not on there, Tony.
What is it?
Plum Street is not on that motion.
Exactly, that's why.
So, that would have to be a whole new motion.
So, just say Mulberry.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if you're gonna say Mulberry, I'm not okay with that. I want Plum Street.
Can you just say that?
Do them individually.
Just do them individually, yeah.
I don't care how you wanna go.
Wouldn't you just, all five are okay, are voted on?
Yes, the other five.
You up, you vote no on this street?
Yes.
That's all, that's all.
Okay, is that good enough?
Yeah, that's great.
Up to you, you, you're the one who's-
All right, so, all those in favor on that?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So, Tony, you voted against the one thing.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Wait, I have, I have another one.
Go ahead.
All right, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion-
I'm sorry.
-introducing term limits. The term limits would be for three consecutive terms for all elected officials, and specifically, a total of four years for any one person to hold the chair or vice chair position.
I have a second.
I'll second that. Is that gonna pay?
And can I get a roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Any questions or comments?
Do we know that, if, if this even meets Borough, Borough Code?
No.
I don't think Borough Code addresses, we have a state Borough Code.
You cannot, uh, you cannot introduce term limits, that's, that's a, that's a Borough Code, I heard.
It's already code.
Not our code, that's the state Borough's.
Okay, can you-
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second by Mr. Gerard, let's vote. Roll call.
Mr. Gerard.
Yes.
Mr. Devine.
Yes.
Mr. Pezzis absent. Ms. Cullen?
No.
Rodriguez?
No, you can't.
Gorman?
No.
No.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
All of state, since you-
Uh, applies to me, so.
Doesn't apply to you.
It's all counted.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second, but, oh, Lou, you got something?
No.
Second.
No.
No, no, no.
No, fuck.